Meeting, November twentieth, twenty twenty-three, time is six P M. This meeting is called to order. Madam Clerk.
City Attorney Doctor.
Here.
City Manager Burton.
Here.
Commissioner Dean.
Here.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Here.
Commissioner Logan.
Here.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Mayor Collins.
Here.
Welcome and thank you for participating in the City of Helena City Commission meeting. We are pleased to be able to provide this alternative meeting format in the city's effort to broaden public participation. Please be patient as we may experience technical difficulties during the meeting. We welcome your public commentary. Please read the following tips and guidelines for the app usage and your participation. Would you rise for the pledge of allegiance? The minutes from November sixth, twenty twenty-three were received. Any corrections, comments? If not, the minutes will be submitted. Presentations. Presentations of fire officers. Fire Chief John Campbell, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Tonight, the Fire Department would like to acknowledge the retirement of Battalion Chief Corey O'Brien and recognize the subsequent promotions that have taken place to fill our ranks. You two want to come up, please? You can stand up with me. I'm just standing right here. In September of this year, Battalion Chief O'Brien concluded a career with Helena Fire Department of over twenty-one years. Chief O'Brien went on to take a full-time position in Montana State University's Fire Services Training School, which he has been affiliated affiliated with on a part-time basis for many years. We congratulate him on his many years of dedicated service and wish him the best in his new venture. With a battalion chief retirement, we look to our captains for promotion. Candidates endured testing and interviews in the areas of strategic and tactical decision-making, administrative capabilities, and personnel management, to name a few. Among the group of well-qualified candidates, Brandt Barash rose to the top and has been promoted to battalion chief. Over seventeen-year career, Battalion Chief Barash has been noted to excel in his job knowledge and skills with a strong worth work ethic and dependability. We look forward to many years of Chief Barash's continued positive influence and leadership in the Helena Fire Department. With the promotion of Battalion Chief Barash from captain to battalion chief, we look to our lieutenants for promotion. Candidates endured testing and interviews in areas of company-level, fire-ground decision-making, emergency scene management, and personnel management. Among this group of well-qualified candidates, Robbie Bennett was selected as the next captain. Over Captain Bennett's over fourteen-year career, he has demonstrated leadership through his calm demeanor and thoughtful approach to hectic and even tragic circumstances. Unfortunately, Captain Bennett is not available to be here tonight. With Captain Bennett's promotion from lieutenant to captain, we look to our senior firefighters for promotion. Candidates were evaluated on their ability to demonstrate sound fire-ground decision-making and overall job knowledge and skill set. Mark Mitchell was selected as the next lieutenant. Lieutenant Mitchell, over the nearly seven years with Helena Fire, has consistently demonstrated a nearly unparalleled work ethic and positive attitude. Mr. Mayor, if you would please badge our newly promoted officers and join me in acknowledging their dedication and achievement.
All right, congratulations again. Proclamation. City of Helena proclamation. You want to say a few words? Is that it? Please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. I'm here today on behalf of the Parks and Recreation Department to accept the proclamation. It'll be spoken shortly or read shortly. On behalf of the four city employees who were trained lifeguards by city staff, who were on-site for an incident where citizens had a stroke and they use their CPR and first aid training to save a life.
Thank you. City of Helena proclamation. Whereas every forty seconds, someone in the United States has a stroke. Every three minutes and fourteen seconds, someone dies of a stroke. Every year, more than seven hundred and ninety-five thousand people in the United States have a stroke. And whereas the recognition of a stroke victim and the prompt summoning of EMS personnel are lifesaving actions. All treatments administered in the hospital setting can limit the long-term effect of a stroke, but they are time-limited. Quick response is the only way to save a stroke victim. Every minute counts. Whereas CPR, emergency response training, and sudden illness recognition are requirements of lifeguards by the City of Helena Last Chance Splash and Water Park, some of whom are also members of the Helena Lions Swim Team. And whereas this multiple rescue response training contributed to the lifesaving efforts for a coach experiencing a life-threatening stroke, who survived due to the skill heroic response. Now therefore be it resolved that I Wilmut Collins, Mayor of Helena, Montana, do hereby proclaim November twentieth through the twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, as Stroke Recognition and Response Awareness Week. Throughout this city, and I urge all the people of Helena CPR AED and the first aid training held by organizations in the in the community, and recognize the efforts of the members of the Helena Lions Swim Team for their courage as well as Recreation Manager Kate Paradin, who provided their excellent training. In witness whereof, I have here until set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Helena, Montana to be affixed this twentieth day of November, twenty twenty-three. Wilmut Collins, Mayor, Dana Claiborne, clerk of the commission. Director Smith? On the morning of October eleventh, the Helena Lions Swim Team Coach and four swimmers arrived for early morning practice. The four swimmers and their coach were alone in the facility. The boys entered the water and as their coach was giving them instructions for the workout, he unexpectedly collapsed on the pool deck. All four boys got out of the water to assist their coach. They checked for breathing and a pulse, retrieved the AED, and called nine-one-one. The boys worked as a team, each taking on a task and providing supportive care to the coach until the paramedics arrived to take over. Their quick thinking and calm under pressure response ensured that the coach received the lifesaving medical attention he needed to survive. Coach J K is recovering. Thanks to the incredible acts of the four swimmers, their courage, presence of mind, swift action to save a life demonstrated their heroism knows no age. The four swimmers, would you come up as I call Janine Devon Gatch, Aiden Van Wick, Isaac Urban, and Garrett Cradinger? We just wait a minute for the group to exit. All right, moving along. Claims. Finalist Director Sheila Danielson.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. Um, tonight I have a consent agenda to move to approve claims uh paid from October seventh, second, twenty twenty-three through October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. Checks numbered one-nine-six-four-eight-zero through one-nine-six-eight-eight-four and fourteen ACH payments numbered one-hundred through one-thirteen for a grand total of three million six-hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand five-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars and thirty-nine cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve consent agenda item A, claims.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Bid awards. Consider the award of the Sustainability Audit Contract to Icon Energy. Director Leland, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Uh, this is a contract to award to Iconergy in from Colorado for the Sustainability Audit. Um, there was a resolution passed by the commission to go to a zero percent uh energy in two thousand thirty. And the first step you need to know when you're doing anything is what do we have? What condition it is? And then how we can move forward and use the best uh funds to go forward? Is it to do solar? Is it to replace pumps, anything along those lines? So we are now starting the first step and doing a sustainability audit. And it's taken a little bit of time. First time we advertised, we got one proposal. So we decided that we should extend it so we can actually have some proposals to choose from and try and select the best uh or the best uh company for the position. And we did receive eleven proposals. We went through all of the credentials and selected Iconergy and there and the city commission budgeted a hundred thousand dollars to do this sustainability audit. And it's our recommendation to award this con contract to Iconergy uh in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Comments from the commission?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I have um two questions for Dr. Leland. Um, the first one is, so we um are looking to do what they consider a uh a level-two assessment from what I gather. Um, and the only thing, not only, but the three things that we would be missing essentially um look like they would be kind of like action reports in terms of capital improvements and um proposed upgrades. Can we do that level three in-house so we get the same kind of information following the audit? Or how do you see that moving forward?
Uh, Mayor, Commissioner, is we would have liked to have gone to that level, but we just didn't have enough money budgeted. And instead of waiting for the next budget cycle to come around, is just get the first round done because this is going to have to be completed before you move to the phase three to get everything. And so we thought that it'd be best to get this and then see where we're at, what we can do in-house, and then take two of the the buildings and go to a greater level. And then however we feel, we may come back to get more money. So we're not losing anything. We're just trying to move forward faster than uh waiting for a budget cycle to come around. And then we will be able to gauge where and what we can do in-house.
Okay, that's a great segue, Mr. Mayor. For my second question was, what's that? I didn't see in here, so maybe I missed it, but what is the timeline for completion for that? And I guess will we have enough information by our next? When we start budget meetings in May to know what needs to happen next?
Mayor, Commissioner, uh, we are looking at getting it completed probably within six months or at least have a good idea of what's going on. And we will be working with them to see what it would be to put something into the into the budget, next budget cycle. So that's one of our priorities. After we uh get this contract signed and start working with them, uh, what it would take, how far they're going to come along, and if we do need to put anything else in the budget.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Any other comments from the commission? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just a question with both the first and the second rounds of bids. Were there any companies from Montana who bid or no?
Mayor, Commissioner, yes, there was one. And to just clarify, this was a proposal, not a bid, uh, because we don't use it on an engineering contract in the state. The only reason I bring it up is we, you can't use uh budget as one of them. But anyway, is yes, there was uh a firm in Montana that was selected. Um, but they were going a little bit different and didn't have the the expertise that we were looking for.
Any other comments from the commission? Do we have any public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk. Oh, geez. Okay, Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to award the Sustainability Audit Contract to Icon Energy in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk, would you take the vote, please?
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Commissioned proposals. Mr. Mayor. Go ahead, Commissioner. Shertliff?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Uh, on the meeting of November sixth, we had had a item A, we had heard from uh the property owners that are located at two-one-six-seven Head Lane. They were asking for an expansion of our sewer district and services and um I had Commissioner Logan had made the motion. I'd made the second. And when it was voted on, um, it was uh three to two against. I am with your with your permission, I'd like to make a motion. A motion to reconsider request for the enlargement of a sanitary sewer service boundary for the property located at two-one-six-seven Head Lane that was heard on November sixth, two thousand twenty-three, and directing the city manager to place it on the agenda at the next regular city commission meeting.
Any second.
Mr. Mayor, maybe um just to clarify my question, this is so the motion that's just been made, I don't think you said the words, but it's a reconsideration motion um to reconsider this item. So it will be properly noticed on an agenda. And I'm happy to second that. And I will just maybe preface that with voting in favor of the reconsideration tonight does not indicate support or opposition to the actual proposal, just a willingness to reconsider the item at a date determined by the city manager. And I'm looking at the city manager and city attorney just to confirm that is all accurate.
Mayor, Commissioner Dean, yes, all of that is accurate.
I will second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Do we have any further comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Uh, just a a question. I understand this is a reconsideration and I'm comfortable um supporting a reconsideration, but I would ask that when and if the item is moved to the agenda, that if there's additional information, because a reconsideration without new information seems um less fruitful. So if there is new information or different information to consider, I would welcome anything that we could review. Thank you.
Please, go ahead.
Thank you, and I appreciate Commissioner Shertliff's uh motion in the second to reconsider, I think, on the evening of uh that the uh issue was heard. One, the applicant was not present, and I think that might have um been helpful not only to him and his wife, but but also maybe uh better inform us. And I I just think, I think in fairness to that, um, I I think it'd be good for us to to reconsider. It's a pretty important decision for them. And uh, so I thank you both for your willingness to consider that. Thank you.
Okay. Madam Clerk.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Reporter of the city attorney.
Mayor Commissioners, uh, in that last vote, um, got away from me before I could say you didn't take public comment. You may wanted to see if there's any public comment on that motion.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments on this motion? Madam Clerk, do we have any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Okay, so do we redo this or it stands?
Mayor, it stands.
Okay. Now, reporter of the city attorney.
Mayor Commissioners, I don't have anything to report tonight. Thank you.
Reporter of the city manager.
Mayor Collins, with your permission, I'd like to hand the time over to the city clerk to give the commission a brief update on the on the election.
Thank you. You have the floor. Uh, madam clerk.
Um, thank you, city manager and uh mayor commissioners. Um, as you are all well aware, the uh city's general election was conducted on November seventh uh of twenty twenty-three. Uh, as of this meeting, according to the County Elections website, the unofficial results posted show a total of nine-hundred-and-thirty-six ballots were cast in the single competitive race in HCC District One. Those results were declared official at the canvas earlier today, and the county will be updating their site soon. This reflects a twenty-three-point-three-point-one percent turnout. So that includes both active and inactive voters that are reflected in a total of four thousand uh four thousand fifteen ballots that were available for HCC District One. Uh, the result of that uh race, that competitive race, were John E. Andrew, Patricia Bick, and Diana Hammer were all elected as the regular candidates that were included on the ballot. Lori Fitzgerald was declared the official winner of the write-in candidate today at the canvas, and she has ten days to accept that position. Um, tonight, you will be signing the certificates as the governing body uh that will declare all individuals that uh were up for election by acclamation official. Uh, this is per section thirteen-point-one-four-zero-three, section five A, which gives the local government and the governing body of that local government the ability to declare the filed candidates elected by acclamation. Section B of the same statute gives that same governing body the ability to appoint and fill any positions open due to an election. So uh with your permission, I I would just note for the record that those uh that are elected by acclamation include three commission members, Commissioner Shertliff, Commissioner Logan, and Commissioner Dean. Um, Municipal Court Judge Ann Peterson, and twelve members of the HCC, which include in District Two, Sonda Gob, Joe Lehman, Nancy Perry, Benjamin Kuiper, in District Three, Emily Mowers, Lowell J. Chandler, Hage Myers, in District Five, Ryan Schwakert, in District Seven, Dylan J. Clapmeier, Denise Roth Barber, Susan Rossi Stephens, and Bob Havek. An application process is ongoing for the remaining vacancies in the HCC. As I know you are aware, the remaining seats left vacant following the election was a total of twelve. As of this date, there are eight applicants that, applications that have been received by the commission office. Those applications have been reviewed by the HCC for a recommendation per the request of this commission. You should be seeing that recommendation along with all application materials on the eleven-twenty-nine-twenty-three admin meeting for your initial review and discussion. The final vote on those applications received will be conducted on twelve-four-twenty-three. Should the commission approve all eight applications, the remaining four vacancies will remain open for appointment. Um, and they will remain vacant until filled through this established commission application process. And with that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, my report is complete.
Thank you. Comments from the commission? Do you have any public comments on this? Yes.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Commission. This is my first time to a city commission meeting in Helena, Montana. And we've lived here since nineteen seventy-four. But I have been, my wife would say I'm a man of many words, so I'm going to keep it short. You have your copy of what I wrote out or what Peggy wrote out and uh, I live in Helena, Montana. I'm a representative of the Helena Cities, I'm a newly appointed representative of the Helena Citizens Council. And I will be going through the process in January of swearing in. Uh, the commission, the the committee requests where I have, where they have the lines, those lines on that sheet that I gave to each one of you, uh, the HCC approved the seven HCC applicants to serve for the for uh to serve from where the the HCC meets in three-twenty-six. Oh, I've got excuse me. The HCC approved the seven HCC applicants to serve for the twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five term. We look forward to having the mayor and commission approve those applicants as well. We anticipate that the February, we will again have a full member twenty-eight percent, a twenty-eight-person HCC board. The HCC has also approved new recommendations regarding pesticide uh so application and notification. The HCC will not, as usual, be having a December meeting. Our swearing-in ceremony and election will be taking place here in the City County Building January twenty-twenty-four. Respectfully submitted, HCC, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll move on. Regular items. Consider acceptance of Lewis and Clark County DUI Task Force Grant Monies. Uh, Attorney Doctor, you have the floor.
With your permission, Mayor, I'd like to defer to Amy Hockelock, the Assistant City Attorney.
Please.
Thank you.
Mayor and Commissioners, I'm here tonight to ask for your acceptance of some grant money our office has been awarded. For the past many years, uh, we have split a For the past many years, uh, we have split a summer law student intern with the county attorney's office. Uh, that's a law student at the University of Montana. And that's been funded by the Lewis and Clark County DUI Task Force Grant Monies. And that work then is focused on driving under the influence alcohol and drug-related, um, impairment. That work has benefited our office, the law student and our community. And the work of our office has expanded and is significant enough to support a dedicated intern. So this year we prepared a grant application and we were awarded a grant in the full amount we requested, which was six thousand dollars to fund the program for the summer. And so now the next step is for the commission to accept this grant money so that we can move forward with that program. Thank you.
Good. Thanks. Comments or questions for the city attorney's office? Do you have, do you have any public comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I move to accept the awarded amount of six thousand dollars for the purpose of establishing a dedicated intern in the city attorney's office. For the summer of two thousand twenty-four, chosen from the University of Montana School of Law.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shirtlift.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Consider a resolution to adopt International Fire Code twenty twenty-one edition. Chief Campbell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, uh, this is identical to the, uh, consideration you've given to this ordinance in the past. The reason you're seeing it again. Is I failed to adequately publicly notice it and under a direction of council and the city manager, we're just going to start over again, make sure all the transparency elements are included. Uh, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to field them.
Thank you, Chief. Any comments from the commission? Please.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, and Chief Campbell. I think, I, I think you just said this, but so there are no substantive changes to what we approved in the past. This is simply a noticing issue.
Correct. This is identical to what you've already seen in the past. Thank you.
Any other comments? Do you have any public comments on this? Madam Clerk.
Uh, I have no public comment online.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Uh, I'd move to adopt the twenty twenty-one fire code as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shirtlift.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consider Bill Roberts Golf Course Season Pass Donation. Director Smith, you have the floor.
Mayor Commissioners. We presented this topic on the November fifteenth administrative meeting. Um, for, for the commission to consider approving the donation of a golf season pass to the golf advisory board. Um, I'll briefly describe the initiative. Um, we're looking to get water put back on the golf course for our golfers. It is a substantial cost of thirty to thirty-five thousand dollars. And working closely with city staff and the golf advisory board over the last few months, we've come up the idea for them to do a fundraiser, which they did approximately twenty years ago to fund the. Installation of the sign at the entrance of the golf course. And we're here today to ask for your permission. Um, staff recommendation is to move to approve the donation of a season pass to the golf advisory board.
Thank you. Comments from the commission? Any public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk, any online?
I have no public comment online.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I move to approve allowing the Bill Roberts Golf Course staff to donate a season pass to the golf advisory board fundraiser.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shirtlift.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, Mr. Mayor, next on the agenda, we have the, um, consideration of a proposal to sell a portion of park property. Um, and I guess maybe as once we introduce it, um, I'd like to move to table this item at the, um. And reschedule the call of the city manager to ensure that, um, it's fully ready to be vetted and presented to the commission.
Okay, looking for a second? Second. It's been moved and seconded. Do we have any further discussion?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, just to the city manager.
Yeah, would you just?
We weren't fully prepared for this, and this is why we're moving to table. Would you say that's accurate?
That's correct. Mayor, uh, Commissioners, I think if we went through the conversation tonight, we'd have to repeat it. Because we, as you can see, it's under regular items. We should have advertised for a public hearing, which we did not do. So this will give us the time to adequately advertise and agenda correctly as a public hearing.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Do we have any public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk, any online?
I have no public comment online.
The motion to table. Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shirtlift.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Consider dedication of parcel of real property from Jeffers, Jeffrey M. Lovely and Michelle Anne Lovely Brodessen. Director Smith, you have the floor.
Today we have, um, Brad Langsather, our open lands manager, to speak to this topic as the subject matter expert.
Mayor Commissioners, um, in two thousand and one, one of the city's key open space acquisitions was the Bombard acquisition. Which was a forty-eight acre parcel of property located south of Deal Drive and west of Limekill Road. Located within the interior of those forty-eight acres were two load mining claims. One was the Katie Load. And one was the Star of the West Load. The Katie Load, when we purchased the property, the city received full ownership of that mining claim. But the Star of the West Load had an undivided fifty percent interest that was outstanding. And so since two thousand and one, the city has had a narrow strip of property, uh, within our open space. It's about fifty-two feet wide. I think it's eleven hundred. Plus feet long that, um, has dissected the property. We have two recreational trails that pass through it. And at times it's created some property management issues when we're accepting grant funds and such, because I have to identify it and exclude it from treatment. Uh, fortunately, um, my brother and a sister, Jeffrey Lovely and Michelle Anne Lovely Brodessen have approached the city about donating. Their fifty percent undivided interest in the Star of the West Load to the city of Helena, which will give us hundred percent ownership. And, um, to facilitate this process, we had a formal appraisal completed on the property so that they'll get their credit for their donation. And I did a, uh, evaluation of the property to see if we needed to do a phase one environmental analysis. And because there was no actual mining activities that ever occurred on the property, there was no need for that. And so at this time, um, I'm here to answer any questions you may have. But city staff, uh, would like commission to move to accept. The donation from Jeffrey and Michelle Lovely. And, um, then we would have full ownership of MS two-five seventy-one lot forty-one. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to ask.
Thank you. Comments or questions for Mr. Langsather?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Um, for Mr. Langsather, you'd, you'd mentioned an appraisal had taken place on or been evaluated on this parcel. We did, um, uh, Mayor Collins, Commissioner Logan, we had a formal appraisal done. It was kind of a unique appraisal because there's no access to the property. There's no electrical service to the property. And of course, it's a long, narrow, uh, mining load. But it did have a value, uh, the fifty percent interest had a value of eighty-five hundred dollars. And that's what the donation will be for, is for that value. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Langsather.
Any other comments from the commission? Do we have any public comments? Madam Clerk, any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Mayor. Go ahead, Commissioner.
I move to accept the dedication of an undivided half interest in the Star of the West Load Mining Claim, MS two-five seven-one. Lot forty-one located within city limits of Helena, Montana.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shirtlift.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Consider the final plat. Consider the final plat for the seven hundred Coal Avenue Minor Subdivision. Creating three new lots from one acre for the property legally described as the portion on the southeast quarter. The northeast quarter of section nineteen township ten north range three west Lewis and Clark County, Montana. C Senior Planner Ray, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Um, as you said, you're considering the final plat for the seven hundred Coal Minor Subdivision. Um, the applicants, Jason and Lana Moyer, applied, first applied for this subdivision back in late April of two thousand twenty-two. Um, in February of this year, it came before you for preliminary plat consideration and was unanimously recommended for approval. Uh, with that, there were associated findings of fact, which had two conclusions that needed to be addressed before final plat could be considered, the first of which was installation of sidewalks along the entirety of the McHugh frontage of the property. Which the applicant did install and had approved by the city over the summer. Uh, the second was that they were to install sidewalks along the Coal Avenue frontage of the property. Um, they were to do that before final plat or opt to financially guarantee them. They opted to do the latter, and that was recorded, um, a few weeks back. Um, so having reached that point, the applicant is now ready to proceed with final plat and request your consideration. So the motion before you this evening is to move to approve the final plat for the seven hundred Coal Avenue Minor Subdivision, creating three lots from one acre. For the property legally described as a portion of the southeast quarter of the northeast quarter of section nineteen township ten north range three west Lewis and Clark County, Montana. With that, I'm happy to take any questions you have of me. The applicants are also present if you have questions for them.
Thank you. Comments or questions for Lana Ray? And the commission? Do you have any public comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I'd move to approve the final plat for the seven hundred Coal Avenue Minor Subdivision, creating three new lots from one acre for the property legally described as a portion of the southeast quarter. Of the northeast quarter of section nineteen township ten north range three west Lewis and Clark County, Montana.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shirtlift.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Public hearings and finer passage of the ordinance pre-zoning to PLI prior to annexation property related to Mount Helena City Park. Director Brink, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission. Just give us a couple minutes, a couple minutes, a few seconds. Get the power. You thought you'd get away from not having a presentation this evening. I apologize. But I will make it quick. Uh, just to note while I'm getting this up, um. If you will allow me to have one presentation, we recognize it's two separate items, two separate public hearings, which would require two separate actions. But in the interest of time, it'd just be one presentation. So again, this is a consideration for pre-zoning, uh, and the next action is a final annexation of property that is subject or known as. A Mount Helena City Park that is currently not in the city limits. So this process has two steps. Uh, the first one is pre-zone, which is the subject of this first item. Uh, it sets the zoning district in preparation for final annexation, uh, ensures compliance with the growth policy. Uh, first reading of the ordinance to pre-zone, a prior to annexation, which you've already conducted that first reading and approved it unanimously on October the thirtieth. And so here we are tonight, second reading and public hearing. Uh, the second step, uh, is the annexation of this is under the, uh. Part forty-four, excuse me, uh, of Montana City Code or, um, Hella Montana Code annotated. Uh, gov, uh, contiguous government land. Uh, steps for adding contiguous government owned land to the city of Helena. So the first step was a resolution of intent to annex. That was a general, uh, agenda item. And you heard that or considered that, um, on October thirtieth, and you set the public hearing for this evening. Uh, between then and now, there is a required, um, period of protest that is up to twenty days. Today is day twenty-one, uh, of that, that time for, time, timeline. Uh, and so we're at the second step, and that's final annexation resolution, uh, in the public hearing that goes along with that. So tonight, the subject at hand, consider pre-zoning and annexation of properties owned by the city of Helena related to and surrounding Mount Helena City Park. Uh, the subject properties include all adjacent rights of way and those described as, I will read them for the record. Uh, parcel one block seven, eight, sixteen and twenty-four of Highland Park and Lewis and Clark County, Montana. And as shown on retracement survey filed under document number three, 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 nine, three, one, two, and parcel two block seventeen, eighteen, twenty-two and twenty-three of Highland Park. And Lewis and Clark County, Montana, and as shown on retracement survey filed under document number three, 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 one, seven, eight, four. And the west half of the southwest quarter, section twenty-six township ten north, range four west PMM, Lewis and Clark County, Montana. Accepting therefrom, uh, tract A or certificate of survey filed under document number five, eight, nine, four, nine, two, T, and the records of Lewis and Clark County, Montana. So these are a couple maps, uh, highlighting one, but the annexation of the, the subject tracks. Uh, and the adjacent zoning of the parcels, and you will see the large block of PLI, which is currently that portion of Mount Helena City Park that is in the city limits. Uh, this is a map demonstrating in dark green, the boundary of the annexation, and then the light green, those areas of adjacent rights of way. That will be included in the annexation. And as noted, uh, a vast majority of La Grande Cannon right of way will be now annexed into the city. There's a small piece there to the east that is wholly surrounded. Um, there's a little part of Silverette and La Grande Cannon that will still be in the county. So the project information, this site is generally located west or northwest of the portion of Mount Helena City Park that is currently located in the city. Uh, it, it consists of approximately a hundred and thirty-six and a half acres. Currently, it's parks and open space, so the use will not change. And currently in the county, it's zoned rural residential mixed use. Adjacent zoning R two and R three to the north, R one, R two and PUD to the east. South is PLI, which is the, uh, Mount Helena City Park that's in the city. And to the west is unzoned county, which is designated urban residential mixed use. Uh, land use designations, there's three that, that are attached to this property, open space suburban, suburban and urban. And the property is partially located within the USB. Uh, pre-zoning, public comment and engagement. Uh, to date, we have not received any public comment relative to the pre-zoning. Uh, engagement. We sent notices and ran notices in IR. Um, and sent certified and to certified letters to adjacent and nearby residents and property owners within a hundred and fifty feet. Um, for the annexation, public comment and engagement, this is required as part of, uh, seven, two, four, four, oh, one of MCA, which is also known as part forty-four annexation. Annexation of contiguous government land. Uh, I won't read this in entirety, but essentially the, the clerk of the commission shall call, shall cause, um, notice to be published in newspaper to successive weeks, the final. Uh, um, for a period of twenty days after the first publication is what's known as notice of protest. Uh, to date, I'm not, uh, planning staff has not received any statements of protest. I'm not sure if the clerk has. I'm not aware. Um, legally, the legal notice was published in accordance with part forty-four. And then again, certified letters were, were sent to adjacent and nearby property owners within a hundred and fifty feet. Uh, zoning review criteria for the pre-zone action. Uh, MCA lays out some guidelines for and criteria for zoning regulations. Uh, zoning must be de, designed to one, secure safely, safety from fire and other dangers, promote public health, safety, welfare, and the general. promote public health, safety, welfare, and general welfare, and facilitate the adequate provision of transportation, water, sewage, schools, parks, and other public improvements. MCA goes on further to describe the purposes of zoning, and that is to ensure reasonable provision of adequate light and air, effect on motorized and non-motorized transportation systems, promotion of compatible urban growth, character of the district, and conserving the values of buildings and encouraging the most appropriate use of land throughout the jurisdictional area. So we reviewed this pre-zone application on those guidelines and standards and concluded that apple codes that will attach to this property, of course, Helena City Code or zoning ordinance will attach, it being PLI, public lands and institutions. The international fire code will attach. And then safety issues, once annexed this property, will receive all city services, including police and fire protection, which is really the crux of the issue is sure it's city-owned property. But the question is, who provides public safety to the tracks with it being outside of the city? Reasonable provision of adequate light and air, subject property is zoned in the county as rural residential mixed use, and zoning will now be PLI, keeping the property as public recreation and open space. Effect on motorized, non-motorized transportation. PLI should have no additional impact to either motorized or non-motorized systems. Again, the use of the property will not change. Promotion of compatible urban growth in character of the district and suitability for particular uses. Subject property is again, three different land uses, suburban, urban, and open space. Growth policy encourages lands to be designated as open space to be protected and used for public recreation. Again, that use will not change. And in this PLI district designation is in line and in keeping with the zoning designation for the rest of the city park that is currently located within the city limits. And I think this is concluding, conserving the value of the buildings, encouraging the most appropriate use of the land. PLI district is suitable district, again, like I've mentioned, when considering the existing land uses in the vicinity of the subject tracks. Adjacent tract is in the city, currently Helena City Park. Staff finding in conclusion for the annexation. The addition of these tracks to the City of Helena is consistent with the goals. Did I skip one? Bet I did. Nope. The addition of these tracks to the City of Helena is consistent with the goals and objectives of the Helena City growth policy. Those goals are intended to guide city decision-making and implementation of a citizen guide vision for the future of the city. And staff finds that the annexation of these subject tracks and adjacent rights and adjacent rights of way is in the city's and our inhabitants' best interest. So staff recommendation, the first is the pre-zone. Of course, we recommend approval of the ordinance pre-zoning to PLI. Prior to annexation, the subject property is known as a portion of Mount Helena City Park that is not currently within the City of Helena. And there's our motion. Our motion is to approve final passage of an ordinance. And I will not read again the legal description. So staff recommendation for annexation, you would think it would be the same, and it is. We recommend an approval of the attached resolution of annexation. I will note that in the motion that you have in your packet and in our staff report is not entirely correct. So at the end, when we reference adjacent rights, it should read adjacent rights of way. So this property should include all adjacent rights of way into the City of Helena, Montana. Any questions?
Thank you. Comments or questions for Director Brink? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Mr. Mayor, just a brief comment. I just want to thank city staff for helping move this pre-zoning and annexation forward and really grateful to the individuals and organizations who have helped ensure that Mount Helena can be a place that generations ahead of us can enjoy and very, very excited to hopefully get this passed today and include more lands into our city park.
Any other comments from the Commission? Do we have any public comments on these issues? Adam Clerk, any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Okay, we'll, I'll entertain a motion for the first, for A, and then we'll go to B.
Mr. Mayor.
What? Oh. You.
I apologize right after you made the call. I did get one hand raised.
Yes.
I would ask that the individual that has their hand raised online, please read your full name into the record.
Kenneth Eden.
Can you say again?
Kenneth Eden.
You have the floor.
I'd also like to thank the city staff and the Commission and Mayor. I do have one question. At this September 11th Commission meeting, at the end of Mr. Brink's testimony, there was a question from, I believe, Commissioner Reed about the status of the Grand, La Grande Cannon Trail between Silverette and one mile west to the closure gate. I wonder if you could clarify in the context of the presentation you just gave, what changes, if any, have been made in the end result of the status of that trail?
Adam Clerk, do we know who we're talking to?
May you, can I ask you to please state your name into the record once again, please?
Okay. I'm sorry about my voice. It's not COVID. Kenneth, that's K-E-N-N-E-T-H, Eden, E-D-E-N.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You want to address that, Director Brink, or you want us to move on?
Man, Commissioner, I can answer that. So the portion between Silverette and where it's gated, that will still be wholly surrounded, and it is not subject to this annexation request. Those are still under private ownership. The names escaped me, but there's two owners that own about four or five tracks, and that will still be in the county.
Thank you.
Yes.
Do you have any other public comments? Adam Clerk, any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no other hands raised.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for A.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I move approval of an ordinance pre-zoning to PLI, public lands and institutions prior to annexing into the City of Helena property legally described as parcel one blocks seven, eight, 16, and 24 of Highland Park in Lewis and Clark County, Montana, as shown on retracement survey filed under document number 3339312 and parcel two blocks 17, 18, 22, and 23 of Highland Park in Lewis and Clark County, Montana, as shown on retracement survey filed under document number 3331784 and the west half of the southwest quarter of section 26, Township 10 North, Range 4 West, EMM, Lewis and Clark County, Montana, excepting therefrom tract A of certificate of survey filed under document number 589492T, records of Lewis and Clark County, Montana, all being known as portion of Mount Helena City Park.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Adam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
I'll entertain a motion for the public hearing and resolution to annex.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I will move to approve a resolution to annex property legally described as parcel one, block seven, eight, 16, and 24 of Highland Park in Lewis and Clark County, Montana, as shown as on retracement survey filed under doc number 3339312 and parcel two block 17, 18, 22, and 23 of Highland Park in Lewis and Clark County, Montana, as shown on the retracement survey filed under doc number 3331784 and the west half of the southwest quarter of section 26, Township 10 North, Range 4 West, PMM, Lewis and Clark County, Montana, excepting therefrom tract A of certificate of survey filed under doc number 589492T, records of Lewis and Clark County, Montana, and all adjacent rights of way into the City of Helena, Montana.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Do you have any public comments on this? Adam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
At this time, is there anyone from the public wishes to address the Commission? Adam Clerk, do we have any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Well, I just want to, at this point, recognize the winners of the brawl of the wild. Go Grizz!
Mr. Mayor, I second. I would also like to, since we have Chief Campbell in the office or in the room tonight, I'd like to thank the Helena Fire Department for helping Helena Food Share this last week with the turkey challenge. And it was great to see our folks down there. Thank you very much, Chief.
Any other final comments? If not, go Grizz. This meeting is over.